Street painting, yellow lines discussion.
Mr. Chairman, just, I'm sure that other people received some of the feedback that I received, and I'm sure that everyone was made aware that a couple of weeks ago on a Sunday night about 11 o'clock or later, a company that normally paints lines came out and painted more lines without a police detail and sort of in a sloppy way, but more important than that, there was no communication in terms of any of the neighborhoods being, you know, notified, and additionally, and I think Shelley, maybe you weren't here, but I think the rest of us were, but I'm sure you heard about it anyway, last time this occurred, it occurred on June 30th, the last day of the fiscal year, and there were many objections to it in the neighborhoods for many reasons, and at that time, residents were vocal, as they were again this time, and they came to the board, and the board had voted to return the streets to their condition before June 30th, I believe, and I could be wrong, of 2016, maybe 2015, I can't recall exactly, but I think Tom would remember what year it was. Sixteen, okay. So unfortunately, it happened again, and people are concerned. I always try to, on this board, be consistent and respect the neighborhoods and the residents, and I really appreciate it that we did lower the speed limit. We get a lot of complaints about speeding, and a lot of the feedback that I'm getting from the residents is that with the double lines, the speed has really picked up. So I guess I have problems with the whole process, the whole failure to notify, the whole done in the middle of the night, no police details, and, you know, we had a commitment to these streets, and I believe it was West Forest, MacArthur, and there was one more. We had a commitment that we would restore these streets back to their previous condition, and some of that happened, which I appreciate, but some of it didn't happen. So based on, and I can't be the only one that got calls here, hopefully other people got some calls, but I got some calls, and based on the resident feedback, I wanted to put the agenda on to perhaps discuss it with the board, get to the bottom of it, and hopefully resolve it for the neighborhoods.
I'd like to start off. I did see the complaints. I personally didn't get a phone call regarding this. I know I had called Mr. Grover and Chief McIntyre, and to me, it comes down to, we all have different managing skills, and I know things changed, the policies and procedures changed throughout the years, and sometimes being a department head, you have to instill this into the employees, and it's almost the same with the residents. It's almost like if someone calls and complains, it's almost like you should be finding out the reason why, and if there's laws that they're going by, that they have to go by. To me, it's more of an answer to the public saying, okay, this is the reason why, it's, you know, it's federal guidelines, it's this, it's that, so to have this on the agenda, and I watched the June 21st meeting last year, and that was, that was when I started getting phone calls about, you know, you're taking away safety, and even tonight, I was driving my daughter, and she's just starting to learn how to drive, and I asked her, "Cap, what do you think about lines down the street?" First, she says lions, and then, you know, we had to move on, but I said, "No, double yellow lines." She says, "Why, Dad?" And I said, "'Cause people, you know, are concerned about..." And her starting to drive, she says, and it made complete sense, it's like, it's like running the track, you stay in the line. That's, I couldn't, it seemed so simple to a 15-year-old, so, I don't know, I'm definitely going to open it up after the board, I want to hear from Mr. Grover, Matt Grafton, Aaron, traffic, people first, and then I'll open it up to the public if there's any residents that are going to have any concerns after the board, but that's my two cents.
My understanding is, they're guidelines, they're not rules. The last sentence in that is the, I think it's traffic coordinator, there's a name for that, which actually falls under Mr. Younger, as the person that makes the final call on the double yellow line, so it's not mandatory. More importantly, three quarters of the streets in town have no lines in them, and we talked about Summer Street last week, no crosswalks, no double lines. Now, there are double lines on both ends of that new pavement, that's still got nothing, so how arbitrarily certain roads, and it does look like certain roads, have been hit twice with the same double lines, and people have complained about them. The other thing I found out was discouraging is, I know we got that, we put down a brand-new street, and then we literally grinded the lines out of there, which, you know, I don't know what did to the life expectancy of that street, but it certainly didn't help. I found out last week that they have a solution they can use after they painted all over the street, that they can, and that's how they cleaned it up, it's not like that anymore. So there is something they can do to erase double yellow lines, I guess, as opposed to grinding.
Well, you can see where they took out those mistakes. It's still visible.
Less visible than the grind down the middle of the street. I mean, I'd go on to say that they stood, I think I was told that they're going to, because any time, on that particular Central Street, any time a car crossed the yellow line, it left like a bear mark on it. So those lines have to be repainted, I doubt anything else, but again, it's December, so if you can do that or not, I don't know.
Mr. Chairman. So a couple of things. One, the sort of the middle-of-the-night thing, I'm very happy they paint the lines in the middle of the night, I'd hate to think that they were painting the lines in the middle of the day when people are driving on them, as we saw people driving over them cause an issue, so that is a good thing. I know there's been a lot of discussion about this, so I, you know, there is a comment in the Uniform Guide, I don't remember the acronym, that says, it is, there is discretion for the town, but if you continue reading the sentence, it talks about four streets less than 16 feet wide, and gives the explanation that if a road is too narrow, your cars may not actually be able to drive on one lane, trucks in particular. So there is discretion, but that discretion is in a very specific case. I'll read from the Federal Highway Administration's website, it says, "Why can't a single center line be used on roadway open to public travel?" It says, "A single yellow center line for bidirectional traffic does not have legal definition and introduces ambiguity to motorists." Basically, it's not in any of our manuals, this is federal, so this is actually across all states. Massachusetts complies with these standards. It goes on to talk about the practice that was used on rural roads was basically to save money, and it really doesn't, because the cost isn't having the crew out there more so than the single or the double yellow line, and that practice is outdated. These standards exist for safety reasons, as was kind of spoken to before, and I think it is incumbent upon this board to educate the community, to say, you know, double yellow lines are there for a reason, you have more yellow paint, you know, it provides a gap between lanes, you have more yellow paint, and I'm not an expert, this is just some stuff I Googled, you have more visibility. And, you know, I think we should leave it to the experts who look at these standards to interpret those lines. As to the line or no line, we can talk to the experts and get their opinion. The standard is actually yellow, double yellow line or no line in certain cases, and again, that has a little bit to do with the width of the travel lane, so that would explain why there are some roads, and again, I have not done an analysis, and nor do I think this board should be doing analysis on which roads, but there are clear guidelines as to when do you use lines, when do you not use lines, and if you do use lines, use double yellow lines. So, you know, I think we should be working with residents to help them understand, you know, that there is a standard, we should be following that standard, and, you know, if we need to, let's ask someone at Mass Highway or whatever to give us the background for why those standards were put in place, so we can communicate that.
I think it's, since last year, we've added a traffic study committee, which, I mean, if everybody in that committee feels as though these lines should be going down, it's us as a board to back their decision, because they're the professionals, I know. Again, good managers manage, and, you know, I don't want, I mean, I'm going to open it up to anyone else on the board, and then I'd like to hear from Mr. Grover and Aaron and Matt.
I'll just keep it brief, because I think Sleckman-Wilson really sort of stated anything that I would have stated myself, other than I actually was at that meeting last June, I was actually the first one.
Double yellow line meeting?
I was at the first one on the agenda to give an update for the coalition, and spent the first hour and a half in a double yellow line discussion. So I'm fully aware and distinctly remember that meeting in detail. That being said, I have noticed that, you know, when you drive some of our roads, especially going into Wakefield, you know, you see the double yellow lines, and then they stop when you hit the Stonem portion of it. So it makes sense to me that those lines should probably continue if they're required or used, you know, for safety purposes there, we should be consistent. I do agree with Sleckman-Busi in that if there are places where there are yellow lines and it's inconsistent due to construction, I think that it would be a good idea for the traffic committee to look at those roads to make sure whatever has been removed gets replaced and fixed, so that those lines are consistent across the board.
One road that was just done was High Street, and that got the double yellow lines, and I believe High Street's the same length as MacArthur Road. Growing up there, I remember, it's the same, North Street to Elm Street, so.
I will actually just note, I mean, my road at some point in the last five years went to double yellow lines, I honestly didn't even notice until, until, you know, you see everything on Facebook, I mean, and now I'm fine.
Now you're mad.
Oh, yes. No, no, I mean, I'm glad we're, I'm glad we're following standards and doing what's safest for the town.
And if I may, I live on Franklin Street, so.
You've always had double.
We've always had double.
Certain streets, Franklin, obviously, and Main, Montville, you know, those should have double lines, you know. When you start looking at, you know, MacArthur, that gets, I don't know why that street particularly would have to have a double line. But I do know the residents, but if you drive around that neighborhood, there's a million streets that have been paved over, that's the most paved area of town, and none of those streets have double lines, with the exception of these roads we're talking about. They got paved last year, and they got repaved again this year, none of the other stuff got paved, so the residents are peeved, you know.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a comment. As far as those middle-of-the-night comment that you made, Anthony, my son was actually coming home from hockey, and he has a brand-new pickup truck, and it's now yellow and charcoal, it's two colors, because when he, he lives on Green Street, when he crossed over, no excuse for that, Anthony, no excuse for the police detail not being there, police detail should have been there, that's number one. Number two, the process, okay? We had a public meeting where we discussed with the public, and we took a vote, okay? And that vote was not upheld, okay? That's unfortunate, but the public has a right to know. We sit around this board, and we talk about communication, and it doesn't happen, and they wake up, and can you imagine how they feel? Now, I don't know about you, I live on a cul-de-sac for a reason, I moved here with two small little kids. These people bought their house in a neighborhood that they felt was conducive to the lifestyle that they wanted, they pay very, very high taxes, especially on the MacArthur Road up and up in Robin Hood, they pay high taxes. They didn't deserve this to happen this way, it was wrong, let's just say it was wrong, okay? We can argue the merits of it, and I feel as Tom does that it's discretionary, because we read it in the last meeting, and I feel it is discretionary, but I think that we should obviously balance safety, and we did that, I think, when we lowered the speed limit and a number of other things that we've mitigated, the traffic survey, the lights, we've done a lot, but I think in this particular case, it reeks of disrespect, just because of the way that it happened, and that's why the people were outraged. It's very simple to communicate to people, it's very simple. I understand there was a communication lapse. This is the second time, we have the same communication lapse, I don't know, is it the same vendor? Possibly. I asked Tom to withhold the payment myself, I marched up and I asked him to withhold the payment, just because of the sloppiness of the job, drive down Green Street, it's ugly, and there's no excuse for that. Now, I don't know how much we paid for that, but we should not be paying for that type of work, that is not professional work, in my opinion. So I felt the need to respond to some of your remarks, Anthony, and I felt the need to express the discontent of the neighborhood, because I think that's important.
I just quickly, I want to separate the two issues, because the sloppiness of the work, I mean, that is inexcusable. I'd actually like to hear, I mean, I'm assuming, we have not had this issue with people driving over the paint in previous years, I'm sort of assuming it's the temperature.
It was more prevalent this year, and the lateness of when the painting was done.
Yeah, the temperature and the lateness of the painting, I mean, you know, I think we do have issues, I actually very much agree with that, and I don't mean to, I don't mean to suggest that there are not issues in them, and of course, I'm not going to find it quickly, because it's a 435-page document, but I, earlier today, looked in that clause where it says that we're in discretion, has very, that we have discretion, has very specific language about what type of road we have discretion on, and I encourage people to take a look at that, because not only the first part of the sentence was read in the meeting last year.
Again, I would stress the fact that, you know, being managers, it's to understand and let the public know the reason why this happened, not, you know, take a couple complaints and then, and have it changed like it did last year. I remember there was two residents there, I watched the meeting again, and yeah, you could tell the frustration in them, but if things are changing for safety issues, and the federal government thinks that it's necessary to put down double yellow lines, and we have police chief and town administrator and Department of Public Works head, not department head, town plan, town clerk, fire chief, all on the same page, saying, yes, this is recommended for the town. I can't see how this isn't explained to the residents instead of having it go the other way. If the professionals are saying, yes, we should do this, I think we should explain to the residents why.
Mr. Chairman, can I respond to that?
Not to be, you know.
May I respond? I think, as I said when I opened, part of this job is to listen, it's a big part of it. I don't live on Forest Street, but there's a lot of young mothers that do, and they complain to me that it's, the traffic is worse, people are traveling at higher speeds because of the yellow lines. I mean, there isn't a one-size-fits-all approach to a community like ours, it's a large community. There are parts of our community that are more residential, there are parts of our community that are more commercial, it's different, okay? I live in a cul-de-sac, I don't get any cars down this street at all, if I do, they usually live there. I think in this case, we ought to listen to the people who walk their dogs, push their carriages, that are telling me, and I'm sure are going to tell you tonight, this is increasing speed and causing more problems with them and their neighborhoods. Now, we all know we don't have sidewalks, where do they walk? Where are they going to walk? They going to walk in the street? So they have to walk in the street, and the cars are going faster because they see, it's, I think it's probably human nature, when you see two double yellow lines, I think road-highway, I don't think cut-through, like MacArthur, I don't, and I cut-through all the time, I never drive Main Street, I'm always on MacArthur, I'm always cutting that way. So, you know, I haven't spoken to anyone, George, so I don't even know, I'm glad you know what everyone thinks, because I haven't spoken to them, but the bottom line is, there's a balance, and there isn't a one-size-fits-all approach, and I'm sure there's many streets where the double lines belong, I'm sure there are, they belong on Green Street, I live right up Green Street, but they don't belong in every neighborhood, and the residents that live there experience it, so I think we should give them their say, just as much as we give the professionals their say. I think that we have to weigh it, and I think we should let them tell us what their experience has been, so that we can try to walk in their shoes and understand what they're going through. I think that's reasonable for every person on this board.
Yeah, and you actually kind of answered, because when you're saying, "I," all the time, "I talk to the residents, I, I," and then, "I had the opportunity to call, because I wanted to make sure I got the right answer," so there was the opportunity to say, maybe, let me talk to the professionals, and I will get back to you.
Well, that's why I put the agenda item on the meeting tonight.
Right.
So that I could discuss it publicly with the people who live there.
Instead of going through the department head.
And I appreciate you, I appreciate you putting this item on, because I think it needs to be debated and discussed, and because it's an agenda item, it can be. I just want to be fair, George, to the people who pay everyone salaries, they pay everyone salaries, they're the taxpayers, and they deserve to be heard when they're upset, and that's what this forum's about, I think.
Mr. Chairman, the town administrator is trying to...
Mr. Busi, then you can go to make. Well, I just wanted to clear one, it wasn't just two people last year, roughly, you know, actually resigned as temporary TA, because he got inundated all morning, his phone was blowing up because people were complaining about the yellow lines, so it was definitely more than two people, but Caroline's point about the sidewalk, and furthermore, complete streets, I mean, I think we're taking one thing out of context and not looking at the whole picture, and if I go with a street like MacArthur, I don't know how you would fit that into your complete streets, if you got a double line going down the middle, you've got cars racing down the street, no sidewalk to walk on, no whatever, you know, so.
I just, I don't even understand this conversation, I said this last year, and I will say it again this year, there are so many really important issues in this town. Is it, is it the opioid crisis? Is it our schools? Is it economic development? And when you're sitting here talking about you get double yellow lines, honestly, those are the comments that I get of, why are we even having this conversation? There are standards, we talk as a board all the time about following guidelines and standards, let's follow them, whether that's, whether that's single yellow line, double yellow line, no line, let's follow the standards, and we have great people who can do that, we have traffic committee. It is realistically not practical that we poll every street, and even worse, every block of every street, because they probably won't agree, as to what lines they want, and let's, so I don't know, let's make them blue instead of yellow, because we like that, it's not practical, it's just not. That's why there are, that's why there are standards, so that when you drive from community to community, you see the same things, people know how to react, and as for changes in speed, I would like to see a study on that. I understand perception, but I do not, I have never seen anything to suggest a single versus a double yellow line has any impact on speed, has impact on the visibility of the lines.
Tom, do you have anything?
Yes, please, thank you. Thank you, and I do appreciate the board's discussion, that's what the board of Sleckman is supposed to have to discuss issues. Couple clarifications, one, we never had MacArthur on the list to paint, they went off the wrong list, I've seen the list, our list did not include MacArthur, so the issue is now, it is now painted, it's down there, and I know that's worth discussion. Two, secondly, and Mr. Grover has this, I've seen it from Paul Stedman, District Four Highway Engineer, is that if you use Chapter 90 funds to pave a road, you are required to do a double yellow line. What we do in our community, all our pavement management comes from Chapter 90, so there's not even the discretion not to do that if we're doing such. What I hope to do in next year's budget is to add additional money for Mr. Grover outside of Chapter 90 to utilize as part of our pavement management plan. Three, and I've spoken to individual members about my feelings on public safety, I, I don't have a sense of public safety, I think that's very, very important of how we're perceived. The double lines are basically to keep you in the lanes, so you're not phasing yourself into the middle or into the other lane, and that happens so often in any community that doesn't have the lines. One area, and mind you, we're not doing double lines there, but in the morning, when I come into work up at Emerson, right here going into the parking lot, you're literally avoiding vehicles who are coming in, in the middle of the road, and I'm pulling over, that's a tough road to navigate.
That's because of the parking in front of the...
Right, but it's still, they have a tendency to come down there, and if I can prevent, or if we can prevent one accident, or one individual from getting themselves injured or worse in an accident, I am supportive of that, I mean, that's what I think is needed. Be very clear, MacArthur was not one that we had put on our list to do, the deal is now, it's here, and what do we do with that? The other issue is, as Ms. Carl Russo brought up, and it's true, we're working with the items with Mr. Grover about the sloppiness, the poor work, and we are addressing that with the individuals regarding payment. So that, the day after that was done down on Central Street, and I think some other places, we addressed it immediately, and I'm, Mr. Grover, would you...
I have a few more comments to make, too, so. This is also not the first year for sloppiness, I distinctly remember last year reading on Facebook that the double lines on Franklin Street were crooked as a dog's hind legs, is how it was, it was correct, so. So that's not, nothing new, the sloppiness of the work, you know, we've seen that before, but I think, you know, the condition of the road is another issue that seems to be getting lost in this. Central Street, once again, the double lines went through a portal, you know, what we did last week, the wheels come off the car, you know, I don't know why we're selecting six roads to do without doing any prep work on them, they don't necessarily connect different communities, yet we're paving some stuff, and it's not being done, and then, as far as MacArthur Road, my recollection, and I could be wrong, is that there was a drainage issue over there, and those roads were dug up, and pipes were put in there, and the road should have been repaved with the money to do drainage for, that's where it should have come from, not Chapter 90, and that goes to the sidewalks as well, that's my recollection of that project, how those things actually got paid for, could be another story.
Mr. Chairman, Anthony, I'm sorry that you feel that this is annoying conversation, or that it's a waste of time, but I think, besides the unresolved issues in town, one of the biggest complaints I get is that residents don't feel that their voices are being heard, and as Mr. Younger just said, and I'm glad that he did, and I want to thank him, this is the public process, this is the way it goes, we may not like the subject, there's many subjects that I don't like that come before this board that I feel are a waste of time, I feel licenses could be done, you know, in another setting, I feel like they're a waste of time, I feel like these types of issues, when residents can come in, regardless of the outcome, that when they feel that their voices are heard, and that their concerns are validated, I think that adds value to a community, so I'm sorry, but it's on the agenda for that reason, so that they can come in and be heard tonight.
Any more? Bob, Mr. Grover?
I didn't expect to be back here again talking about this subject, but I will, I don't think there was anybody more frustrated than myself when I walked into Mr. Younger's office on Monday morning, and he said to me, "Bob, why was MacArthur Road paved?" I said, "Paved it?" I says, "What?" "MacArthur Road was not on the list to be painted, let's make that perfectly clear, I've given Mr. Younger a copy of the order that was given to the company, it was not on the list, don't know why it was painted, there was a police detail with them when it was done, there were two nights that the painting was done, the very first night, which made the mess on Central Street, there was no police detail, their contract calls for them to hire a police detail to go with them, they did not hire one. I could not agree more that Central Street was a mess, I had the head of the company come in to me and sit down in my office, I met with Mr. Younger, there was never even a question whether we were going to pay them or not, Mr. Younger brought it up, and I told him I never intended to, based on this. The company that we use in is not a fly-by-night company, even though they work with, it's Markings Inc., it's the biggest traffic painting company in Massachusetts, they paint for the Mass DOT, they paint for Logan Airport, okay? We're a little customer, if you would, of Markings Inc., doesn't mean that they were happy. When I had the representative come out here, Tom actually pointed it right out, the correction that was done on Central Street was done with a machine that they use at the airport, it's a waterjet machine, that they did, much better than the grinding. Any corrections we need to do in the future, we will specify that that's the machine that has to be used. We will talk with them, again, we're done painting for the year, there's no doubt about it, they came in and painted that MacArthur Road wasn't on the list, and William Street was, that was the one we wanted to get painted, we paved the new section coming from moving up to Alden Avenue, that was what was supposed to be painted that night. Don't know why the follow-up was there, we've had conversation with the company, they haven't got back to us yet, they're trying to talk to their night guy that does the painting, why it was done that way, we still don't know. Payment, we're not wasting money, because we're not paying, that's number one. As far as yellow lines, the town used to paint single yellow lines, we were informed by the state. We were informed by the state, by the way. It is illegal to paint a single yellow line in Massachusetts, especially if you're using Mass DOT funds. I have a letter from the state saying that if we used to paint center lines on streets that were paved with Chapter 90 money, if, they better be double yellow or they will withhold Chapter 90 funds. Mr. Younger has pointed out, that's the only money we use right now for street work. Is it enough? No, it's absolutely not enough, okay? But that's, that's, that's where that is from. MacArthur Road was not supposed to be painted this year. It would have been painted next year. It was going to be on the list. It's on the list that's established by the Traffic Advisory Committee that Mr. Younger appointed, which is myself, the police chief, the safety officer, the fire chief, the town planner, the town clerk, that's what, and the town administrator. That is your safety committee, who voted unanimously for you to go along with these recommendations. What streets get double yellow? Streets that we think are major traffic streets and streets that are arterial streets basically to other towns that lead into another community. Why MacArthur Road? Even though it wasn't supposed to be done this year, it would have been done this year, next year, and also Broadway, which was not done. I don't know why MacArthur was done and Broadway was not. MacArthur Road, I know the contention is it's just a neighborhood street. It has no sidewalks. It has a new 50-foot watt subdivision that empties out onto it. It's a connector to Wakefield. Wakefield has double yellow lines when you enter into Wakefield. It serves as an access route to the Broadway soccer field. It abuts a playground, 80 rounds that is used as literally baseball. It abuts a cemetery. It has two school bus stops on it. One at Chase Road, the other at Spalding Road. The Traffic Commission had unanimously voted that that should have a double yellow line, whether it gets done this year or next year. What's the purpose of a double yellow line? It is illegal to cross over a double yellow line unless you are making a 90-degree left turn. That's it. So here's a for instance. Little Johnny's walking to school on MacArthur Road to go to the bus stop. Car stops to let Little Johnny cross. Without a double yellow line, the car behind him doesn't know what to do, so he passes. With a double yellow line, you cannot pass a stopped vehicle, period. It is my contention, by the way, and Anthony has cited, it's MUTCD, which is the Manual on Traffic Control Devices, which is not just Massachusetts, that is countrywide, every state. A double yellow line means the same in Massachusetts as it does in Maine, as it does in California. It's the same thing. It is illegal to cross it. We have now, it's not a speeding, you know, that's whether perception or whatever it is. The town now, one of the things the Traffic Advisory Committee is going to be looking at is the 25 mile an hour speed limit. And it just so happens, if I'm not mistaken, there's the end of it, that that's the area we were to start with, was up in the MacArthur Road area, looking at the streets up there. So it is my contention, by the way, and I have the leeway, it says the engineer can provide center lines where he thinks they're needed. I also have a letter in here from the police chief, I don't know if you have it, because of the alignment, because of all the circumstances that are on MacArthur Road, because of the bus stops, the vertical, limited sight distance, et cetera, he recommends it also. So, did I say the safety, safety almost was on that commission also? I mean, that's where it is. MacArthur Road was not an in-your-face type thing as some people thought it was. I was more surprised than anybody that it happened. But it's there now, okay? It is my recommendation that the lines stay. I think it's the Traffic Advisory Commission's recommendation that the lines stay. Any other questions for me?
I have a question. Did you feel it necessary to notify the neighborhoods or?
Of what?
That you were.
That they were painting a street that wasn't on the list?
Yeah, I mean, that you painted, there were streets that were on the list that were painted too. Did you feel the need to notify the residents?
And how would I notify the residents?
How do you normally notify residents?
We haven't on street paint. Let me finish my mic. I'll be happy to look at any procedure that the town wants to implement as far as notifying the residents. And that's not a problem. Matter of fact, we put on a list every year of what our proposed work is for the year.
Mr. Prova, the question wasn't that. The question was simple. Did you feel it necessary to notify the residents? Yes or no? Did you notify, did you feel necessary to notify them? My son has yellow lines on his brand-new truck. It was shock haul. He has yellow lines on his truck as he came home and drove into his driveway. You can see it right in front of his house, so I'm asking, do you think?
There were several cars, there were several cars that ended up with yellow paint, on matter of fact.
Of course there were.
DPW clean, DPW, it's waterborne paint, by the way. It comes off. It's not a, it's not like a permanent marking on there. We were very easily to wash off a car in less than 10 minutes.
Why would we not notify the residents, Bob?
What would we do?
Have you, have you ever notified anybody?
No, we have not.
Can Bob answer another question?
No, we have not.
That's what, I asked a follow-up question. Do you think it was necessary to notify the residents? I think it would have been wise to notify the residents.
We'll be happy to look at the procedure. Matter of fact, we'll discuss with Mr. Younger. What would I do? Put a robocall across town? Because everybody in town drives on the streets.
I don't know how you normally notify the residents. I'm sure you notify.
We've never notified them of painting.
I'm not talking about painting, Bob. I'm asking, I'm, I'm talking about, how do you notify residents? You give it to a robocall or a letter, right? One of the two.
Depends on the project. We have to go door-to-door with notices on the auto work.
Okay, well, that's what I'm saying. We, I think we should have notified the residents, and I think there would have been half the outrage that there was if we notified them, if they didn't wake up in the morning, three, four, five, whenever it was, to see them. And I think that was just showing courtesy and common respect for the people that live in the neighborhood. That's all.
Sorry, I just, I would like to express just an opposing opinion. For routine, for projects like picking up a road, we absolutely should be notifying residents. If we're cleaning a street, painting lines, I don't know, what, cleaning, cleaning sewer the, the storm drains, those are just regular maintenance.
We have regular maintenance every day of the year.
Like, we would be, if, if we were to, if we were to notify residents every time we did that standard maintenance type of work, they would be getting calls every week.
We do notify residents when we do street sweeping. The quadrants are on the webpage. They're on there. We do notify residents.
Okay.
We do.
Other examples, yeah, that's, that's.
Well, if we notify them for street sweeping, wouldn't, I mean, look at.
That's more because they get so many phone calls about when's my street getting swept than it is that let them know.
Here, here's what it is, Anthony. Cars, the reason that there's lines everywhere is because cars drove through them because they didn't know. So I think notifying the residents would have been helpful. And I think it would have been respectful. I mean, I think it's common courtesy to say, hey, this is going on in your neighborhood, whatever it is, a street blockage, a block party, you know, whatever it is. I mean, I just think it's.
Street blockage is very different.
I just think it's good to notify the residents. I don't see any problem with that.
Mr. Chairman, if I may. I think to the point, if it wasn't on the order that you put in, they wouldn't have been notified anyway, at least MacArthur Road, because it wasn't even on the list to begin with.
Matter of fact, we've had three complaints come to Public Works. Matter of fact, they've never heard it, to be honest, to be honest with you. And we did clean the cars ourselves, but they were out-of-town residents that got painted on their cars.
And if I can finish, you know, we talk about policies. I'm certain we could add this to a policy to be able to make some general notification in the future as to what areas of town, similar to the street sweeping, and that is more to get your car sort of off the side of the road so that, I mean, you're not parking in the middle of the road, so it's a little bit different. But I'm sure that we could probably come up with some kind of policy. If there's no policy in place and it has never been past practice to notify residents in any way, shape, or form of line painting, then I think it's incumbent upon our board to then, if that is the will of the board, to then look at what would be an appropriate procedure, even if it is just general, you know, we can look and see if it makes sense with, with.
It's, it's almost like.
With the DPW director, does it make sense to say, these are the times of year we're going to be doing it, you know, these are the areas of town that are going to be done, you know, the last week of September, the first week, and whenever it may be. I don't think you can house by house notify. I think that's a little bit too much work.
It's almost, it's almost as if a specific date is difficult also on street painting because it's very.
It's whether the trucks are, yeah, and whether the trucks are available, I believe, as well.
I just want to follow up on something. I just don't, I don't get it. If you, if this is like almost by law and federal law, this is why I, I don't see why it just isn't, this is the reason why there's a double yellow line on your road. Ma'am or miss, this, I mean, I.
It's obviously a hot button issue. And everyone knows.
I get it, I get it, but if it's.
Maybe it is the law.
If it's a law, but I mean, if it's, if they're doing, if we have all the professionals doing their job, and there's a reason, and there's a reason, and then this, this to me.
Notified even.
Tom, let me finish. So what's, what's difficult, and this is hard for me to, it's hard for me to say, but it just seems like a lot of these things are politically driven. Instead of listening to the professionals, this is the reason why, and having something like this, have no problem putting on the agenda, the citizens got to be heard. I get all that, that's true, but these are things that can be handled, I believe. The reason why is because we have a traffic study committee that voted on having these roads done. It's not being mean, it's not being, it's just times have changed, policies and procedures change all the time throughout the workforce, back when, Bob, I'm sure when you started, 30-something years ago.
I just, no.
Forty, forty years ago. No, it just, it just, to me, it's, sometimes it's not a waste of time, it's just, it's difficult sometimes listening because there's more of a motive instead of what the real issue is here. That's all.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to respond to that. If you want to classify, given the residents' voices politically driven, charge me guilty right here. Because every single time that I hear from residents, I will ask to put the item on the agenda. You then can decide whether or not it goes on, and you then can spin it any way that you would like to. But as long as I am on this board, I read my oath this morning, my job is to defend those people. I don't work for him. I don't work for any town department. I work for them. Those are the people I work for. So you can charge me guilty, I'll accept that charge graciously. Mr. Ch, Mr. Prova, were you, were you notified by the company that they were coming out? Were you notified? Or did they just come out?
No, we were notified on Sunday.
Okay, you were notified on Sunday. And when you were notified.
Sunday night, did they?
Sunday night.
You were notified Sunday for Sunday night that they were coming out? Is that, is that common practice for that?
Matter of fact, that was one of the complaints. They did it in an email to me on a Sunday, so we did not even know that they were coming in on that Sunday.
How much notice do you normally get?
Normally, we get, it's during a working day is fine, all right? We, as long as we know for that night, and we know that they have a police detail hired. We had no notification they were coming in, and there was no police detail hired. The company admits totally they were at fault. I mean, it's as simple as that.
I have another question, Bob. Residents were told when they called the DPW that the contractor was given an outdated list. Is there any truth to that, or is that not true?
The contractor was not given an outdated list. The contractor may have picked up an outdated list. The contractor was specifically emailed what the wish should be, which specifically said, "Does not have MacArthur Road on it." Mr. Younger has a copy of it.
What's the date on that email, Bob?
It's September sometime.
Of this year?
Yes.
Can I get a copy of that email? Tom?
Okay, I just have the list. If you're looking for the copy of the actual email, I'd have it in my office.
I would like that.
I just got to respond to the resident comment, Caroline. It's, when people call me, I get them the answer instead of putting it on the agenda. That's the difference between management skills. We all have different management skills. That's the reason why I, I think some of these, or a lot of these, could be resolved before it gets to a meeting like this. Like Anthony said, there's a lot more pressing issues in this town. We have unbelievable projects that our town planner is doing that is moving the town forward. This, this discussion, obviously, there's different personalities, but if you get the right answers from the Traffic Committee, your answers, there's your answer, instead of us debating it, which isn't, it's out of our purview to make this decision. This isn't our job. It's our job to listen, but to feel, to bring it to a meeting, that, that's where we differ.
Mr. Chairman, there are many committees in this town.
Yes, there are.
I agree with some, I don't agree with all of them. I've been on many of them. People don't agree all the time. You have to respect that there's different opinions.
That's why I'm saying we all have different opinions.
As a chair, as a chair, you are one-fifth of the mayor of this town. You are chair for administrative reasons. You don't get to decide my opinion, and you don't get to decide what I place on the agenda, and you don't get to decide how I represent my constituents. Those are my decisions, and I have the autonomy and the authority and the ability to make them.
I said we're all different, though, Caroline. You missed it, though. I said we're all different.
I don't criticize you, Mr. Chairman, for your style and the way you resolve problems. I don't criticize you. That's your way. Please, respect the way I handle problems. I do them in a public meeting for a reason, so that the residents know that they have a voice and there's a record of it. What happens behind closed doors, sometimes, Mr. Chairman, as you know, never happens. It gives them a record. The folks that came in with the billboard, they had a record because it was discussed in a public meeting. Other folks that have come in that have had to take recourse to the later date, had a record. When I come in to the town administrator, I always go with two people. So there's a record that something happened. So this is a public record of a meeting that took place because a neighborhood was upset about the process more than the lines. I think the process. And once again, you do things your way, I'm going to do things my way. And I, I don't criticize you. I would just ask you, you don't criticize the way that I choose to resolve problems.
Okay. Like I said before, we all have different ways of managing. That's all, that's all I said. So, Tom?
Two things. This was clearly, clearly a hot button issue. And you said to me at the last meeting, oh, by the way, we're doing double lines next week. I had to say, hey, put the brakes on, this is going to be an A problem. You just knew this was coming. And it came, and it's happening again. So as long as we continue to do this without any input from the citizens, you got to have this problem every year. As far as the Traffic Committee is concerned, I think it needs representative gifts for the community in the form of at least one of us. You know, the five experts, creative their jobs and whatnot, but of them, Matt lives in town, and Maria does, but I'm not even sure, is she a voting member on that?
Yes, she is. She's the parking clerk.
Okay. But everyone else is from out of town. And, you know, that goes for all we talk about at night, the different traffic, the parking issues, the, the lighting, all that stuff. The double lines, you know, they need somebody that can represent the people and let them know, you know, people are mad about the parking, the puddles, people are mad about the double lines. People are frustrated at the too many sidewalks, they thought they were getting concrete. These are the things that need to be represented by the voice, by someone's voice.
Mr. Chairman. So, to that point, I think when I get a call, and, and I've been doing this in my job for 20 years, for lots and lots and lots of people, you want to get the facts, and then you want to get back to them with the facts. And the fact is, if you got an explanation, if I got a call from somebody, which I did not get any, if I got a call from somebody on this issue, I would have called the town administrator to get the information, and I would have gotten back to them. I think there is a way to present information that either tries to actually resolve the issue and give people the information, and then there's a way to try to create an issue where maybe there isn't one. And when you say, Tom, you know, if you knew that the double lines were gonna be discussed, you knew it was gonna be an issue, it's a hot button issue, why is it a hot button issue? If it was explained properly, as it just was to me, I don't understand why it is now a hot button issue, or why it would continue to be a hot button issue when the facts are presented. I do agree that there maybe should, maybe we should look at whatever our policies are on notification, I think that is a role that we can play. But I don't think, I certainly don't have any expertise in traffic management. I would leave that up to the people who are the professionals that we hired. It, it's like saying, we've hired all these people to do these jobs, our chief of police, our chief of fire, our, you know, DPW engineer who does, maintains all the roads in town, but we don't trust them enough to do their job, so we have to go and babysit this traffic committee to give input, where I'm certainly not a, a, an expert, and certainly, that is our TA's job, when we get calls of people to, who are upset, to take that information, to pass it along to him, to say, what's the story? Get that information and give it back to them. Or to let them, you know, direct them to talk directly to our TA, the, the two chiefs, whoever the department head may be, that can accurately answer the question. I mean, that, it, that screams micromanaging in my mind, that we're gonna, you know, we, we somehow know better than the experts in their field on what should be done. I, I just, I can't agree with that.
Yeah, but sorry, I, I wasn't gonna say anything else, because I just wanted this to get to an end. But I realize that there has been so much speaking about listening to the residents and hearing their voice and representing them, that I feel it is important. I received no phone calls, but I have talked to many people in town, and universally, they have all said, kind of jokingly, that is on the agenda again?
Yeah.
This is something, the feedback that I am getting from the people that I'm talking to, and we're talking to different people, obviously, and I feel, just wanna put this on the record, the people I'm talking to are saying exactly what I said in the beginning. We are spending time on something that should be left to the, the planners in town, the people who are, who, who are experts. It's a standard, let's, let's move on. As I said last time, and I'm saying this time, this is our longest conversation of the night. We spent less time on electrical aggregation, something that impacts every single resident in this town, than we are on whether we have one, two, or no lines on a road, when there is a very clear standard that is being interpreted, that it was explained as to why we are, we are doing it that way. And I'm not trying to dismiss individual residents who have concerns. I, I mean, I agree with Shelley. Ask the question, you know, understand the standards, communicate the response back, but, but we need to spend our time on things like electrical ag- aggregation, complete streets, housing production plans, economic development, the, you know, buildings in town, construction projects in town.
Our own policy.
Sure, our own policy. Um, you know, and, and it, it's not that I mind this being voiced, that, that there are some concerns, or discussing the errors that, that a company made, I think actually that is important to, to understand. But in terms of, you know, I just feel strongly that the voices that I am hearing, representing the people, as you said, like to say, the voices that I am hearing are overwhelmingly saying, this is not an issue, this should be adjusted in a board of select meeting. So I just wanted to put that on the record.
I have to respond to this too. So, if I honestly felt that the roads were in fantastic shape, that our sidewalks were wonderful, that our tax dollar was being spent as efficiently as possible, I'd be home right now. There's a reason everybody here came and ran, because they didn't like something about what was going on in town. And we're here, and that's our job, to question the people that do the job. Hey, the people aren't happy with A, that don't mean they don't like B, C, D, and E, and you're a bad guy, just, this is something that bothers the people. Double yellow lines happen to be one of them. Puddles are another, sidewalks are another, and you go down the list. You know what the hot ones are, and you know what the ones that most people don't care about. Uh, that's our job. We represent people, we come in here, sit over here, sit here and have an intelligent conversation with us, and there's nothing wrong with that. And I've been saying that every week, it seems like, that I have to say this, you know. Carolyn and I always accuse being micromanagers, where I can tell you, what was the last time I was in your office?
You're not allowed.
Then there was. Is that why the cops are up front?
So, hearing that, though, Tom-
You're not gonna talk.
I mean, listen, that's what you just said, but, and hearing that, when they do call you, and there's the reason why you have a traffic committee, couldn't you just explain to them, there's, this is the reason why-
I definitely think we need-
There's chapter ninety, there's all these other bylaws and federal laws.
I think we need representation for the people on the traffic, I don't think it's represented well enough. Um, but, at least this would come up, you know, this would be something to say, hey, I know you guys want the double yellow lines, it might be the law, you're gonna have to convince me of it before you, before you do it, but I can tell you what's gonna have to happen.
But then, I mean, convincing you, because I know people are upset, but what about the, the twenty-one, the twenty-one thousand other people that, okay, you're gonna waste this much time on it, yeah, people are frustrated and stuff, but it's just, it's just part of policies changing throughout the country. This, this is nationwide.
People who lived in Colonial Park didn't care about Oak Street last summer, it didn't affect them. You know, if that project was coming down their street, it would affect them, they would care, you would hear from them, you know. That's, the people who've got double lines painted in their roads, enough of them cared, they felt that, you know, it also affected their property value, that was the bigger issue they had.
That is an inaccurate statement.
Well, that's the way they feel, okay? So if you-
Point of order, Mr. Chairman, Tom has the floor, point of order. Yeah.
I, I'm tired of trying to talk over people, other people answering for people. Um, you know, that is actually the biggest complaint. People feel that they almost took what a twenty thousand dollar hit, with a, with a double yellow line. If it's right or wrong, I don't know, but that's where their frustration, and I would be frustrated too.
Okay, Tom?
Uh, two items, trying to clarify and get everything back going. One is, I don't have a problem trying to improve communication. You know, whatever we can do, I'm fine with that, and fine looking into that, that's not a problem whatsoever to do that. There's always room for improvement on that area, no matter where you are. So, if that's the way, we'll look into a way we can handle that. Secondly, uh, we talk about the internal traffic group. When I came here, one of the questions I had for Mr. Grover, Chief McIntyre, is, how do we handle no parking signage? How do we handle, you know, this type thing? Who makes those decisions? And it's like, well, we kind of, you know, we put it up, you know, some requests, we look at it. I said, do we review that internally with, uh, the planner, the fire and police chief, public works director, a parking clerk, who has to deal with, you know, whether she voids or not voids a parking ticket? And I said, no, not really. So, I developed, to not take total credit for it, but I wanted a group that we could bounce these requests and ideas off of, before someone just unilaterally implements it. I've always thought it's better to have a group discussion versus generally just one person doing that, because there may be something that, if we wanted to put a no parking sign or some type of parking restriction sign, and then Erin would come back and say, oh, do you realize that's gonna impact this project going down the road as such? So it's better to have all that, and I'm very pleased with the input that we're getting from all these professionals going forward, and that's, I'm gonna continue that. Communication, like I said, again, always room for improvement, and if there's something we can do to get the residents more information on projects and things such as this, that may have happened, all right, I'm all for it.
Mr. Chairman, two quick comments before you open it up. These are very important, and I wanna respond. I know, Anthony, maybe some people told you that they don't care, but-
Large number.
Eventually, Anthony, what goes around comes around, so it may not be the yellow lines, but eventually, they'll be impacted with something that happens at the town. Like, I don't live near Weisfrank, but I, I can feel the pain that people feel about that, just because of, you know, the information that's out there. So, they may be saying that to you today, mock my words, tomorrow, something will happen in your neighborhood, and we'll think nothing of it, but to them, it's really important, and to them, they wanna voice. And as far as Shelley's comments, I think, in normal situations, you're absolutely right. But I think, because this was brought before the board, voted on to be mitigated, never was mitigated, happened again, I think there's distrust. And I think the public trust is important, and I think that, yes, you'd be a hundred percent right, Shelley, in another situation, I think this situation is unique, and that's why I think there's such a high level of frustration, because people felt like, what, they never fixed it in the first place, now they're doing it again, they felt like it was, you know, wasn't done in the right manner. So I think, you know, that's all I wanna say, Mr. Chairman, is I think that's part of it, Shelley.
I'm gonna open-
One last thing.
Tom?
I just, one last thing, I think the other, that's the frustration here. So when you go out and tell people, I will get, look into this, I will get this corrected, I mean, it, it doesn't get done, and then it's, I told, asked Tom, he hasn't done anything with it, I don't know, a small, little tiny thing, I don't know, six months ago, I asked for that mirror on Gould Street, to, with Gould and, uh, Summer, the corner intersection there. Nothing happened with it, I don't know that anyone followed up, but there was an, I saw that one on Facebook too, car accident right at that intersection, and the comments were, by six, I asked Tom, Lucy, he said he'd take care of this, you know, somehow, I am now responsible for a car accident on the corner of Gould Street, because I asked to get something fixed, and it never got followed up, you know, so that, that's our frustration here.
All right, can I, um-
Your cone got removed, though.
Huh?
Your cone got removed.
My cone, I do wanna thank you for that, now, I was out of town.
Merry Christmas for that, right?
I told Mr. Younger, I want, I want the actual cone, I'm gonna monitor my wall.
Next meeting, let's just put it there, and present it to him.
Just had to throw that out there, on a positive note.
I did wanna thank you for doing that, but the puddles filled too, yeah. Although I drove, the, the first night, I was out of town, the first night, it wasn't illuminated, so, baby steps, you know, I don't know if it's now, is it lit? See, that's why you need the night people on this traffic committee, and that's kinda my point, is, the light's in, that's great, and I drove by, I said, that's nice, I got a light. I said, there's a light, I, I, I'm happy, but-
It's a fixture, but no one-
But I'm like, as happy, you know, so, those are the little things, you know.
All right, I'm gonna, I'm gonna open up, I'm gonna open up to the public, I'm gonna open up to the residents that are, that are affected by the double yellow lines. Yeah? Just a name and address for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Deb Calometta, I live at one oh seven Forest International Speedway. I live with double yellow lines in front of my house now, I have two small children, and I have a babysitter that I've hired, so that I can be here tonight to speak on the issue. Um, just a couple of comments, and then, um, a question for you. So, I was, and first of all, for anyone who watches this after the fact, I think that it's very educational to be here in person, and to see the dynamics in the room, and hearing the sighing and the, you know, the nonverbals, and kind of watching the interactions is very inter, you know, educational. Um, I, Mr. Seibold, I heard you say that you, your daughter said that the lines keep people from crossing over, it's a federal mandate that you can't cross over the lines, of course. That's probably one of the reasons why I feel it makes it very dangerous to have the double yellow lines, and I understand, maybe it's a, an interpretation, but one of the reasons why people are so upset is because it's a highly populated area with many small children. I have a two-year-old and a seven-year-old, and when he was in kindergarten, I walked him to school every single day, that it wasn't raining, and sometimes when it was raining. And now it's just, it's different with the yellow lines. We haven't been able to do that as much, because the traffic and the detours around Robin Hood has been very dangerous, it's not safe. Sometimes when I do walk him to school, if it's a particularly mild day, I, he's, if he's on a scooter, when I'm coming back, I actually keep the scooter out, so that I have cars that are whizzing by me, give a little bit of space, like, is a buffer zone between me and the cars that zip by, because they don't cross over the yellow line. So, one of the, the differences is, when he was in kindergarten, without the yellow lines, the cars would become, stay at a safe distance from the pedestrians, where there are no sidewalks. And now, it's like they're programmed to follow the lines, because they don't wanna break the law, but I don't have a sidewalk to walk on with my kids. Um, I think that there is a lot of confusion because of the communication issues. I know that I get notifications if there's an administrative position open in the town in my email inbox, but I didn't hear about the lines being painted. It's a huge safety issue. You cannot talk to a single resident on, who lives on those streets, who maybe, who has young children, who's very hyper-aware of this, that the, the, the speed has, it has to have doubled. I mean, I know that maybe there's, there's no traffic data that supports this. I have, I took video, I work at home, and I took video today of the cars whizzing by. It starts at one-thirty, it's pretty dead during the day, but it starts at one-thirty, and I leave to get my son at two-fifteen, two-twenty, and that's when it's the busiest, and people just take it as a license to fly up the street with the double yellow lines. So the reality is, even though they were put down, and it's a federal mandate to make it safer, it has made it less safe. The, and, and I can challenge anyone, because I walk with a baby carriage, and if you can't see me coming, it's a bright red baby carriage, my son's on a scooter, we've all got reflectors, we look very nerdy going to school, but we're safe. And I, I think that a lot of the neighbors are concerned or confused, because when part of Forest Street was paved a couple of years ago, they removed one of the, the crosswalks at, I believe it's Spruce or Spring Street.
Spruce, Spruce Street.
And it's gone, and it, it never got replaced, but yet we have these double yellow lines. So it's becoming like, an area that you can't, you can't walk through. Um, I heard someone say that you have to have these double lines, you don't have to have them if it's less than sixteen feet. There's an area of Forest Street that couldn't be wider than sixteen feet, you can barely get two cars passed, and yet people whiz right by, and they almost clip mirrors, especially in the winter, right at the Robin Hood Street, or Robin Hood Lane, or whatever the street is.
That road at the end of Oak, when you take a left heading there.
Yeah.
That's it now, yeah.
It's, it's very narrow, so to have a double yellow line there, people can barely go in two directions. So, I, I think that's one of the reasons why many of the people are concerned. Um, you know, I mean no disrespect, but I, I, Mr. Wilson, I, I understand that this is, you know, an issue that people have beaten to death, this is my first meeting that I've attended on this issue, because I have to get a babysitter to come to these meetings, and they go very long, um, sometimes. And, um, I, I feel like this is one of the most important issues, because the parents I talk to at Robin Hood Schools, I'm not speaking for them, but I can just say my experience has been, that we're all more afraid of walking to school with the kids, and that's what we should be encouraging the kids to do, to be able to walk. I bought in this community, I bought on a street that didn't have double yellow lines, so that I wouldn't be living on a street where people whiz by. You know, I, I understand that there are more important issues, I can't believe I'm going on record saying this, but, um, yeah, there are definitely more important issues in Robin Hood right now. My father came to my house today, why? Not just to help my mom babysit, but to remove dead rats from in front of my house. Okay? Uh, that's not something that I ever thought I'd deal with. And when he went to Lowe's, he rubbed elbows with two other people, who are also from Stonem, who were, were removing rats and trying to get rid of rats. This is, it, this has become a, a smaller issue to me, because I think the rats are a safety issue, you know, that's kind of surpassing this. So that's a, uh, the reasoning of why the residents are upset. That being said, all of that, what I just said, is basically irrelevant. It's water under the bridge, because if it's a federal law, and it has to be done this way, and it can't be interpreted in a different way, we have to look at what's being done. Is there a way that we can look at it on a case-by-case basis? Can we look at the streets and say, hey, we did the double yellow line, like the federal mandate said, it's, it's becoming more problematic, we didn't put in the sidewalks, there's no room to put in the sidewalks with the double yellow line, there's no way the car could physically fit through, it would have to become a one-way. Is there a way to petition and say, couldn't we make a special exception? It's a school zone, or it seems that, uh, you know, it's, it's, there was too many close calls. I can tell you, my son is seven years old, and when I was walking him when he was a baby, I had none of these issues. And now I have a two-year-old, and the whole time, I barely take her on walks, because the neighborhood, the, the lines have been there, uh, it's been too dangerous to, to walk around, people go through way too fast. So I understand there are definitely other issues, but this is definitely something that, that needs to be discussed, and, um, if, if it's a mandate, and it's a closed case, and it has to be double yellow lines, then I would ask, um, you know, when, when there was an outcry of painting over the yellow lines, and people said, okay, well, let's have the yellow lines removed. I said, I woke up the next morning, I was like, thank God, the lines are gone, yes! And then, three days later, they reappeared, because whatever paint they had put over the lines was some kind of removable or washable paint. And I'm asking, do we pay for that? I mean, did, that couldn't have been free, somebody paid for that, and whether we paid out of Stonem money or Massachusetts money, I'm mad as hell that they did that, and it, it was probably expensive, and it was ineffective, and that's, that's also what I'm upset about. And then, a couple of weeks ago, I was looking at the yellow lines, and I thought to myself, huh, unfortunately, they use really permanent paint, because they don't look like they're fading in any way, and, you know, I was kinda disappointed about that, I thought, you know, enough time had passed, that they'd kind, nope, they're still blinding yellow, and, uh, and then realized that they got painted over again. So it seemed to me, and my neighbors, that it didn't need to be painted over, and it costs money. So who's paying for that? Who paid to have it painted over? And then who paid to have it painted again when it didn't need to be? I don't know, I mean, if it uses chapter ninety funds to pay the job, I've lived there ten years now this year, and, um, and it's never been paid the whole time I've lived. So, these are just concerns, I, I'm sorry, I don't mean to be disrespectful in any way, it's of utmost concern to me. I can't have my kids playing in the front of my house now, because of the way the cars drive, and I, I did, I took video, I've been taking videos, and the cars are just, it's just different, it's one after another, and they continue to zoom down the street. And one final thing, I know that the speed limit is being proposed to be twenty-five miles per hour, but it's no good, you can lower it to five miles if there's no enforcement, it means nothing. And in fact, my neighbor had a sign in front of her house, up until a year ago, that said twenty-five miles per hour, and it was removed. And now there are double yellow lines, so we're in trouble. Thank you.
It could, I'm sorry, could I ask a question, if you don't mind?
Yes.
Do you, do you, if you can, if you mind, Mr. Chairman, do you find that, where you said it starts at one-thirty?
Yes.
Generally speaking, does it seem to you that it has increased, maybe the volume has increased, or the speed has increased due to the construction? It seem like people are maybe racing to get to pick up, or-
It could be.
Do you know what I'm saying? Like, I'm just trying to gauge, when you said that, it kind of clicked in my head, like 1:30 is a very specific time for like, volume and speed to pick up, so?
I have personally found, as a Massachusetts driver, that around the state, that the traffic starts about around when people are trying to get their kids home from school. So whether they work in Stonem, or Woburn, and they're trying to cut through Stonem to get to Redding, or Wakefield, or wherever, we are a cut-through town, we're an access point. So, that is, I, that's what I have noticed. I didn't, I believe if the lines were painted in the summer, it was summer break, so I didn't notice a lot over the summer. But then, I definitely pay attention to it because as I'm looking, okay, what's the traffic situation today? Can I walk to get my son? Can I not walk? So I'm very aware, you know, after lunchtime, that it seriously increases.
And then my, my other question is to the Spruce, you said a Spruce Street sidewalk was?
Crosswalk.
Crosswalk, I mean, was removed?
It was removed, probably three years ago.
Was there a request made to have it put back in? Do you, are you aware of?
You know, on, there was a, a police officer who lives on Ruland Street, I think, and I had actually just spoken to him briefly, and he said, you know, gee, it would be great to have sidewalks here. And I said, yeah, that would be great. And then, I'll be completely honest, I had it on my list of things to do for a while, my son was in kindergarten at the time, and I got so discouraged because it felt like, you know, I can't, sometimes I would come to the meetings, and you feel like you're saying things, and I don't know if anything I'm saying now is ringing a bell with anybody, but I, I feel like it's overwhelming. You know, I'm looking at sidewalks being put in on Williams Street, and as a, as a resident, I'm like, why are they replacing these? Why now? Why when the people of Oak Street are having all these issues with the rats and the water and the construction and the detours? That, oh my God, there's so many detours. Why now to put these sidewalks in when they're already there? I mean, they look like they're in perfect condition, but yet we don't even have sidewalks on the way to Robin Hood School.
So, so some are different, different projects, different areas.
Correct.
Things get scheduled differently. But I think to, to, to that point, I think it would be great if the town administrator could look at that, and the safety committee could look at that crosswalk and see if it's something that could be repainted. And in the future, you, you don't have to come to a meeting. Send an email. Just pick up the phone and call the, you know, call the fi, the police chief, call, you know.
I'll, I'll tell you, I have to, I have to be honest again. I, I did call DPW one, the first time, I picked up the phone and I said, gosh darn it, I'm looking at all these Facebook comments, and it's making me mad as heck. It was like 7:30 in the morning, and I thought, I'm going to respond to Facebook. And then I said, you know what, I'm going to do the mature thing, and I'm going to pick up the phone, and I'm going to talk to the people who are actually in the offices that make these decisions. And I'm going to put my phone down, and I'm going to pick up the real phone and call Town Hall. And actually, I don't think DPW's even in Town Hall, but I called, and I spoke to someone, and I was so shut down immediately for even having the gall to call about these yellow lines, and they had just been painted, that I felt like, you know what, I don't need to invite that negativity into my life. And I felt like I'd been yelled at, and...
I was actually referring to the sidewalk, the crosswalk.
Yeah. It was around the same, you know, time that I, I had, I had called.
Three years ago?
No, I, that, I, I did get the name of a person I called to try to find out, and then I just, I didn't pursue it because I felt a little bit, I felt discouraged. There were some other issues going on in town, like such as Weiss Farm, and I started to get really down on the town. But I love Stonem. I love living here.
Well, I think that's something that is probably a fairly easy fix, and, and in terms of safety, could be something that the TA could look at to see if it's a side, you know, crosswalk that could be replaced.
Spruce Street.
And, and certainly, even with the schools, if that's something you brought to the schools, having served on the school committee for 10 years, we get calls about crosswalks. So you don't necessarily have to go to the DPW or the police chief. You can even talk to the school administration about that kind of stuff, and that gets discussed between the two. And I know that because, having served on the school committee for 10 years, we've dealt with those kinds of things, especially in an area that is near a school in terms of crossing to get your kids and, and that kind of thing. It, it's not sidewalks.
Yep.
And it's something minor, but I think it's something that, that could be probably pretty easily resolved unless there's a very specific reason why it was removed, in which case you would have an answer.
And that, that is where people cross to get to Robin Hood if they live on Constitution Way, or, or Street, that whole neighborhood with, I don't know if it's Magnolia, or, but anyway, it's, it's across North Street. They cross North Street, which I don't know where the crosswalk is on North Street, but if we lived in that area, there's no way we'd be walking to school because trying to cross North Street, you might as well be trying to cross 93.
But it's the end of Forest, where we take that turn, I think the crosswalk was there. Used to be there.
Okay. But see, when people are trying to get their kids to school, you have to walk up a quarter of a mile with two, you know, with two kids, I couldn't do that, and then walk a quarter of a mile back, and then to Robin Hood. So the reality is, you can do traffic studies and all that, but unless you're walking the path that morning, or, you know, I, I saw a police detail had been there, of course, I mean no disrespect to the police, I love the Stonem Police, but I saw a police detail checking for the speed because there was a detour, and there weren't any detours, there weren't any police officers around. We saw many near accidents. Where I live on Forest Street is where DeWitt comes down. People fly down to DeWitt, and they make a turn, they don't even stop at the stop. And they had a police officer there, but he was there at like 11:00 AM. And my neighbor texted me and said, oh, great time to have a, try to check on the, do a cop count, it's the middle of the day. And then they left, you know, shortly thereafter. So it seemed to me it wasn't an accurate reflection of what's actually going on. What the, you know, how were the studies conducted? I'm not trying to question any of the studies, I'm just saying, what the reality is, I'm lucky to be alive because I've had so many close calls. Even my mother walking my son with my baby girl, she almost got hit by a car, and she stopped walking altogether. She's like, forget him wearing a helmet, we should all be wearing helmets if we're going to be walking that stretch to school. So I, I feel that it's a very important issue. I feel that it's, it's a safety issue. It's important to have the crosswalks there. But unfortunately, even with the double yellow lines, and again, if it's, if they have to be there, and there's no way we can get around that, and there's no way we can discuss getting a sanction for that, when they don't see a crosswalk, and there's double yellow lines, forget it. Forget it. So, that's, that's just the reality.
Well, and it sounds like the signage also needs to be replaced.
Yes. Yeah, they took down the 25 mile per hour.
And, and that may be a good area for one of those flashers, you know, that we're getting.
I would pay for it, honestly. In front of my house, they have them in Melrose, I, I would pay for it. For my own house, not in front of my son's.
Derek, I was going first too. Derek, we've actually ordered some of those flashers, so we can talk about that. What I was going back to was, one, I can speak to Chief McIntyre because you're concerned about speeding or putting a vehicle down there, to see if there, you know, that, I'm not doubting you, but I'm just saying, we need to see from the police department if there is, because honestly, a lot of times, when, I'm not doubting you, but when you're seeing someone going 25 miles an hour, you think that they're going much faster than they actually are.
I, yes, may I respond to that? So I, I totally understand that it may seem that way, but before the, the double yellow lines, what would happen is, that most of the commuting would happen in one direction. So you'd get a car coming in the one direction, and then the opposite, most of them were heading towards Williams Street or Salem Street. And then at the end of the day, most of the traffic would be going in the opposite direction. And now what's happening is they're squished to one side because you can't cross the double yellow line, and it makes it more dangerous as if there are people walking, even when there are sidewalks, the curb's not going to help you if the car's flying, so.
We'll speak with him about putting down theirs to check that out. Second, on the crosswalk, and can't say why it was taken out. There is a general process where you need to determine, go through certain standards to where a crosswalk should be. Part of that is when an individual goes into a crosswalk, there's an expectation that they're in a, a safety zone, and that vehicles can see you, and that they have enough time to stop, and so forth. A lot of communities, over the years, and I've worked in some, where they actually, 20 years ago, just threw up crosswalks without any real rationale or reason. I will look into next week, that particular area, if there was a reason that was removed, or if there is another area within that, within the street that you can place one, that gives you that safety zone within that crosswalk.
That, the woman who I bought, we bought our home from, said that, actually, she went to Robin Hood in the 60s, and they'd always fought for a crosswalk there before there were even houses in that area. She said she remembered there was a greenhouse there, and it was a foundation for many years. They were fighting to get a crosswalk. They finally got it. She happened to drive by our house and stop by unannounced, and we were happy to see her. And, and she said, I can't believe they removed the, the crosswalk that we fought so hard for. So it's been something that's...
I can't speak of why it was removed years ago, but there was the possibility that that was just put up there without looking at, you know.
It could be. Yeah, it could be.
But if there is something we can do to put one there that will give you, you know, the proper safety zone to cross, I don't have a problem with that whatsoever.
And I think when the street, Forest Street was paved partially, and they stopped, they paved over the crosswalk and stopped maybe 10 feet beyond it. And I, I had always thought maybe they just forgot to put it back because they covered over it and didn't get back to it, so.
I do have the crosswalk down.
Yes, thank you.
Ms. Colomita, I want to apologize for your, what you describe as feeling like you were shut down when you called the town department. I don't think that's appropriate. And for those who don't agree with the process tonight, that's why we have to hear from these people so they can feel validated. Because if, when they call the town, if they feel like they're getting shut down, and they call, and they're on a list for their problem, and it's unresolved, this is the last, I guess, stop on the OK Corral. It's the last forum that they have, Anthony, to present their case and to feel like they're being heard. So thank you for coming in. Sorry that you had to get a babysitter, but thank you for coming in, and I appreciate your feedback. I hope that you do feel validated with your comments.
Thank you.
Also, just, we do have public comment as well, and while we might not be able to take a vote, we can certainly listen to your concerns under public comment anytime, which is right at the beginning of the meeting.
Okay.
So it doesn't necessarily have to be an agenda item.
Yes.
And all of our emails are right on the website. I, I can honestly tell you, I didn't get one phone caller email about any of this.
Okay.
So anytime, feel free to email any of us.
Yeah. It's, it's unfortunate. I think people think that they're becoming active when they are on Facebook.
Right.
And it doesn't make it to the official channels.
Exactly.
I just want to reiterate, and encourage you to come here, don't expect an email to get a crosswalk done. I can't get a crosswalk done. I mean, we just, we're just hearing that we're not getting any more painting done this summer. South School has no lines, has no crosswalks. The crosswalk that was there, it's over, just like you're saying. I'm not able to get that done, so I don't think that any random citizen sitting at home can fire off an email and expect a crosswalk there tomorrow. So your best course of action is to come right here and, and let your voice be heard.
Thank you. And I appreciate the time. And just, in closing, I just want to say, you know, I do love Stonem. We've been here for 10 years, and I feel like about five years ago, I started to see a lot of young families moving in here. And I was thinking, this is it. We are, we are in the new Melrose of the nation. This is it. And now I'm starting to see, in our circle, I can see a lot of families starting to move out because they're starting to get frustrated with the operation of the town. It, I'm not, I'm just saying, it's, it can be frustrating. And I feel like, I, I tell them, look, we have a great town. You go to another town, and you might get the same thing. But we want to retain, it's a retention issue too. We want to retain tax generating, paying families. That's what we want. We don't want transient individuals. We want, you know, we want people, individuals who'll be here and pay taxes in Stonem, and get Stonem business, and, and love the town as much as we do. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any more residents? Would like to, Pam?
Hi, Deborah, 72 Forest Street. Probably not going to be as nice as my neighbor because I'm pregnant, I'm tired, but the lack of communication, I've also made phone calls, and I pretty much get a bunch of BS runaround. June 21st, 2016, lines were painted on my street. Tuesday, you guys had a meeting. You voted yes to have the lines removed. That never happened. So what changed from 2016 to now that the lines were repainted? Anybody?
I'm going to defer everything to the DPW director or the traffic study. I mean, I'm, I'm sorry, the TA.
MacArthur was never on the list.
I'm not on the list, although I do feel for them.
I can speak for Forest, but I can speak for MacArthur was that, never.
Forest was always on the list.
You said last year in some article that it's a state mandate, 6,000 vehicles require double yellow lines. Forest Street does not have 250 vehicles an hour driving. I lived there. I've lived there since 2006.
There's also the discretion, depending on where, Forest Street, as you know, is a very windy road, okay? The town has the discretion, and it also connects to another community.
Right, it connects to Woburn.
Correct.
Ruland also connects, you know, it goes through Stonem, North Street, correct?
Ruland, yes.
Yeah. So I called the town administrator last year, and he told me that he was kind of thrown into this position, and I said, what's up with the double yellow lines?
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
Thomas Younger?
Michael.
No, I think that was Ryan you spoke to. That was Ryan who did that.
No, no, Marco. Paul Marco was there, because he was...
Somebody had left.
Yeah.
And he gave communication to the DPW and said, you know, these lines need to be painted. So, I'm sorry, I thought I spoke to you.
I'm sorry, I didn't.
No, no, it's okay. I thought I spoke to you, and you said, you know, I'm getting some phone calls, you know, how about a single line? And I said...
No, we live in D.
Okay, well, I don't know who it was. But I put up my house for sale because of the lack of communication in this town. It's pretty sad. All right? I mean, I have a two-year-old, I'm expecting another girl. I agree with you. I'm in a stroller, I have a dog. So next year, I'm going to have three, a dog, a two-year-old, and a newborn on a stroller. I don't even know my neighbors on Forest Street because I'm afraid to walk there. I walk on, you know, I go to Spruce, Lee Street, Alden Street, because they have sidewalks, and they don't have double yellow lines. So it's actually really frustrating because you're saying it's a state mandate, but where is my state letter or an email?
When Forest Street was originally built, many, many years ago, the residents did not want sidewalks because of the number of trees that would have to come out. If the town wants to book out putting sidewalks on Forest Street, all it takes is money.
Well, which is fine. Isn't it cheaper to remove the yellow lines? Because you can't put sidewalks in the, you know, at the end of Forest Street or beginning, where, you know, where you live at 107, because it's very tight. Are, you think residents are willing to give up, you know, part of their land to put a sidewalk?
It's not their land. The town owns back from the edge of the roadway nine feet. It's all town land.
Oh, that's good. Because I had paid $900 to have a tree removed because they said it's not the town's, it was mine.
Depends on where it is. The town owns nine feet back from the edge of the roadway.
Well, I have, you can Google Map or whatever, but in 2006, when I moved, there was never any yellow lines. So, and I respect that changes are made, but I never get communication. They, it's very quick for the town to send me an email notice that says my water bill is due, but when my street is painted with double yellow lines, I don't get any communication, and I think it's pathetic.
Thank you for your comments. Normally, and I've been working this since 1982, I don't recall, and like I said, we'll look at improved communication, but I don't recall any public works department when they were doing line painting, that they sent notifications out to residents. They normally did it in late evening. They would have a police presence with them, and if some of the painting work was not done properly, it got resolved. Said we can look into communication if there's improvement, but I can tell you, historically, I don't recall when we ever, I've ever done, a DPD has done line painting, that they communicated out to the public.
I, I just think the difference here is, if you're talking about repainting an existing line to make it right, yeah, people aren't going to care. What happened here was, there wasn't a line, they went to bed, they woke up, there was a double line.
Right. Our whole street changed.
What the heck happened here? You know, nobody thought of this was coming.
Right. And then somebody said the word "uniformed," but nothing is uniformed, because in 2016, you all voted, let's remove the lines. I waited, I waited, I said, oh, maybe because, you know, there's construction, they're waiting, you know, for that to be over, so, because of the cut-through street, it never happened. I think it was maybe eight months ago, they painted it black. I thought it was a slap in the face because the next day it rained, it washed right off. And also, I sent an email, on June 21st, 2016, I sent an email three weeks ago, two days later, there's a cop every day on my street. Thank you to the Stonem PD, but I feel bad because at 6:15 in the morning, there is no drivers on the road, it's still dark out. So that's kind of a waste of taxpayers, you know. Granted, they, you know, they'll make their rate, but we have to pay for it, correct?
Ms. Jim, I think considering the circumstances, you're exactly right. I think, considering, and Bob just said it, it is discretionary. And that's what our discussion was in 2016, that there is not a one-size-fits-all approach to the town, and that every neighborhood and the needs of that neighborhood, depending on whether it's highly populated, depending on whether there's children, that all has to be weighed. And I know how you feel when you say it's, you felt like it was a slap in the face, because that's what people communicated to me.
Right.
And that's, I don't, I'm not, I don't respond on Facebook, but I got a ton of snap, snapshots on Facebook.
I am one on Facebook constantly, because if I, I make the call, then I don't get the right answer, I get the run-around answer. So my frustration goes to the Stonem Community Group, and then you have 90 people responding.
I hope you run for selectman. How's that? That's how much I appreciate your commentary tonight, as I appreciate Deb's commentary also. I hope that tonight you feel you got your voice heard, because I think you needed that. I think all of you need that. I think all of you need that down there. I think there's frustration down there. I think there's frustration in the town in general. I think it's very high, and communication's a huge problem, and we do talk about it a lot, but unfortunately, it doesn't change. It doesn't change. And I share a lot of your frustration, so thank you for coming in. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any more comments from the residents on the, will be all lines? Sure?
Just real quick. It doesn't start at 1:30. It's actually start at 6 o'clock in the morning. I live in the law park in MacArthur Road. I have two kids, an eight-year-old and a 10-year-old, and...
Should I name an address for the record?
My name's Ben Breen, I live at 8 Chase Road. And it's not just going to school. We used to have to walk up to Elm Street to bring the kids to the bus stop there. They just bought a bus stop at the end of Chase Road, right outside my house, which is fantastic. The fact of the matter is, we walk the kids up and down to the playground, to the baseball park, and to soccer practice on a weekly basis. I see tons of families walking up and down that road. I see kids riding bikes up and down that road. The longtime residents that live there have told me, ever since the yellow lines were painted on MacArthur Road, the cars have started going a hell of a lot faster. And it's made it, obviously, it's way, way, way more unsafe. So, I understand your point, Deb, when you paint double yellow lines, and you let little Jimmy cross the road, you don't want the car to overtake him. But there is no sidewalk, so what you have to understand is, people are actually walking on the road. They're not walking on a sidewalk. They're on the road. And if the cars are going faster, it's very, very, very unsafe. We're trying to slow the cars down, not make them go faster. So, that's it.
Thank you. Any more comments? Seeing none?
Ms. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we remove the yellow lines from Forest Street.
There's no, there's no vote being taken here. I mean, I mean, we, what I did see last year is that miscellaneous item got moved up to the beginning of the meeting, and we're not supposed to vote on miscellaneous things unless it's documented, so, and that actually...
This is an agenda item, Mr. Chairman.
This isn't an agenda item.
It isn't an agenda, okay.
I think it's an agenda.
Yeah, it's an agenda item.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we remove the yellow lines. They're going to be removed on MacArthur, is that what I'm hearing? Because they're not supposed to be there, Tom?
No, this is...
Am I wrong? So, I'll make, I'll make a motion that we remove the yellow lines on MacArthur and on Forest Street.
I'll second that.
Roll call vote, Shelley?
No.
Caroline?
Yes.
Anthony?
No.
Tom?
Yes.
Nope?
I will make a motion that the town committee follows there, follows the, I'm sorry, MUC...
MUTCD.
MUTCD, which is what we need to do, and that we do speed studies and enforcement on MacArthur and Forest.
I'll amend that motion to include discretionary language that Mr. Grover discussed in a public meeting a moment ago, to review it with a discretionary factor, because he can be discretionary, and I want that language in there.
Is there funding source for the study?
No, 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 the police have, I'm sorry, the study I'm referring to is simply the police have, they put the things on either side that measure speed as you pass. They've done it in various other parts of town.
And a counter to it as well.
Yeah, it counts in measure speed. But we should, we should know what we're talking about for speed on these roads.
I'll second that, Anthony.
Roll call vote, Shelley?
Yes.
Caroline? What are we voting on?
We're voting.
Because there was an amendment.
Yeah, the amendment was a review...
You seconded my motion.
I seconded your motion.
Okay.
The amendment was to include language for discretionary input from the DPW director, because that's what he said a minute ago.
So, that is...
So that when he comes back...
He's referring to is in the MUTCD, or...
Yeah, he has discretion in the law. Exactly, that's exactly what I'm saying.
I believe that because the title, Grover's title has changed, that discretionary falls to Mr. Younger, my resident.
According to the Town Administrator's Selectments Act, there was a previous Board of Public Works, and under the act, the Board of Public Works functions rolled into the TA. Mr. Grover has certain specific powers under the town code, such as things as granting street permits and such. So, that generally falls under Mr. Grover in my jurisdiction.
Are you saying it's a joint decision, Mr. Younger?
I'm sorry?
Are you saying it's a joint decision?
I'm saying is that under, since the town administrator's position, I'm taking myself out, the town administrator's position assumed, under the TA's act, all the functions of the previous Board of Public Works.
So, it's your decision.
It would be road work that would come under my eventual decision, correct?
Mr. Chairman, you have a...
In consultation with the proper individuals.
You have a motion, a second. I'm just trying to understand, I'm trying to understand your amendment, because you're asking for discretionary language, but what Mr. Wilson proposed is that they utilize that MUTCD...
The committee utilizes the document.
Which includes discretionary language. So, I'm not sure what your motion is.
So, what I'm trying to say is that during the review, because it's discretionary, the outcome may change, and I want that included in the motion.
The way I understood Anthony's motion was that we follow the, which is every street in town, right?
No.
No.
It's beyond 16...
No, it has all the criteria of what should you strip, what should you not strip, when, when do the decision...
You get a double line or no line. Sixteen feet.
We specify what the discretionary is.
Please.
The discretionary is only to add to the MUTCD, not to subtract.
Well, then that doesn't, every street in town would need to be stripped.
It very possibly could be, Tom, depending on what the streets look like.
There's been plenty of streets that have been paved, particularly that MacArthur area.
Mr. Chairman, you have a motion and a second on the floor.
I would draw my amendment language from your motion, Anthony.
I still need clarification, so.
We're voting.
To follow these lines, to follow these guidelines, and they are guidelines.
There is a 435-page document that defines everything from striping to street signs, to speed limits, to, it's very extensive across this entire country.
So, I guess...
It does have the language around where there is discretion, and it is, as far as I know, Massachusetts law. I am simply saying that I endorse our traffic committee using that standard to define our traffic rules in this town of Stonem.
Mr. Chairman, but you also included a study...
Oh, I'm sorry.
That you also included language to look at the actual speeds on...
Measure speeds.
...MacArthur and Forest.
And do enforcement at the correct time of day.
Right.
That's two streets, where we deal with the rest of the town.
Well, right now, these are the people before us.
The enforcement was on the two streets just because of the specific concerns expressed. I'm referring in terms of the guide I'm talking about townwide.
Townwide, we need a funding source, because now you're talking huge study, lots of...
No, 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 no. The guide, we, I'm sorry, if you would like, I can say, if it's too confusing, I can separate into two motions. But simply, one, the move that we request, the Town Traffic Committee is the correct name, leverage the MUTCD document to make their decisions around markings. And the second point of that was, based on what we've heard today, I think it is reasonable to request that the chief does traffic counts and speed studies on MacArthur and Forest. They have equipment to do that, they do it in other parts of town, and that they plan a schedule of enforcement as well on those two streets during the times of days that speed concerns were expressed.
Ms. Chairman, I have a question on the motion. The traffic committee recommends, what I just heard is that Mr. Younger decides, your motion had language, that the traffic committee makes a decision. I think that would be out of what their purview is as a board. So, you can change your motion, but I don't think they decide, as far as what he just said, he decides.
I believe Tom Younger's on that committee.
Then if you...
He has final say.
Right, but the committee doesn't decide.
If you would like, I will change the language that Mr. Younger work with the committee to make his decision.
I would like that.
But he's in, he's in the committee though.
Correct.
Get two conversations going on.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman, point of order.
Excuse me. Thank you.
Ms. Chairman, I have one more question around the motion. I recall reading the guidelines in the DOT differently. I'd like to review those guidelines before I vote on this and see, because my recollection is that there was discretionary language and that it wasn't mandatory. I'd like to review those guidelines, so if we're going to have a motion to vote, I'm not going to be prepared to vote on that this evening without seeing that section in writing, as I recall that it's...
470-page document, you should probably see.
That's section.
Mr. Chairman, I, I, so are you, are you thinking that it's not in there, or you're thinking that it is?
I'm thinking that discretionary language is in there.
Okay, so what he's saying is, they have to use that document...
Which would cover it.
Which would cover that. So, that, that's the only part that I'm confused about, because I, I think you're both saying the same thing, actually. Because if it's in the document, you're asking that it...
Correct.
...be used.
I'm asking to use the documents if that discretionary language is in there. It's covered by my motion.
Okay, okay.
To me, it's like the Republican health kit bill. Nobody's read it, but we're going to vote on it, you know?
It's like the Obama bill.
We read it this afternoon, or this section is relevant for today.
But it's a 470-page document. Shelley, you complain every time that you don't have documentation in your hair.
Tom, it's a federal guideline. It's a federal, I'm not the expert. I said that earlier, I'm not the expert. What I'm saying is...
None of us have read.
It's a federal guideline. It's like saying we're not going to adhere to the federal fire standards. Are you kidding? It's a federal guideline.
So, there's almost...
All I'm saying is, they're both saying the same thing.
I don't think we are, but I understand your point, but I don't think we are. I want the assurance of seeing what I'm voting on in front of me, and I don't have that tonight, so that's my hesitation. But I don't trust that it's, that it's not true.
I understand.
Again, knowing that the town administrator is on the traffic committee and hearing this, Anthony, you want these studies done at these MacArthur Road, Forest Street?
Oh, I mean, we do it all the time.
Right, and all the time, but start with them and then move forward. But it's, that's why we have the professionals doing their job. That's why, I mean, they follow that guideline, they follow the federal guideline.
Well, the studies...
You have your, you have your engineering stamp.
The town administrator is good as hell.
You know, that could be jeopardized. He's not going to do anything that's going to jeopardize it.
Just trying to clarify whether there's a vote or not a vote. My intention is to do the traffic counts in the speed review at MacArthur and Forest, and I would have done that with or without a vote. Two, going to be looking in the crosswalk issue...
Yes.
About where we can legitimately place a crosswalk down in that area. So, those are going to be done with or without the vote.
There's a motion and a second on the floor.
So, going back to the crosswalk, I... Let's, let's take this vote first, Tom. Let's, let's just move... Well, there's so many things out here. We're dealing with two streets out of 60 miles, Bob, is that right? How many miles of streets?
Seventy-three.
Seventy-three. Seventy-three miles of streets here, and we have no uniformity, we, I don't even know what we're voting on, you know? To talk about the crosswalks, tonight, we're going to do Spruce Street. I've mentioned several times, Summer Street doesn't have them. They don't have the crosswalks, they've been paved over. I've had Tom ask to go to the traffic committee to get a crosswalk put on Franklin Street from the Paco Lot over to where Fusion Taste is, which is heavily traveled.
Which we have already discussed.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, we did.
Mr. Chairman?
Where did it go?
Mr. Chairman?